...need to order, uh, we are coming back from closed sessions. I would ask our city attorney to please report on that.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. The city council is in closed session this evening on public employee performance evaluation, city attorney, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Uh, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Powers, here. Singleton.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Payne.
Here. I will invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, which will be followed by the flag salute, and I would ask Councilman Shelton to conduct that, please. The city clerk, please read the videotape.
Can everybody hear us out there?
Can you hear us adequately? I'm getting some nods, so I think we're good.
I'll take care of that in just a second. Okay, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Sher- Sher West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. And if everybody could please silence or turn off your cell phones and pagers, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this time, I would like the council for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions?
Madam Mayor, because of the state legislation that prohibits any action by the redevelopment agency, there are a few items that I'd request the council consider to the regular meeting of August sixteenth, so two meetings from now. Those items are item G three, under city attorney's office, an ordinance of the city council repealing and re-adopt, sorry, G four, relocation plan, Old Town Properties project, um, and then, under the redevelopment agency, items I four, replacement housing plan, and item I five, relocation plan.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion. Oh, wait a minute.
Option to approve as presented.
Yeah. Um, do we need to approve the changes? Do we need to approve those changes?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. I'll roll call vote, then.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Ready for presentation?
Okay, our first one, um, character coalition award, uh, the award this month is for respect. And are you presenting?
I am.
And Mayor Payne is presenting?
I am, joyfully, happily. And I would also clarify that, um, the city council recognizes the community of character pledge, which we have posted up here, and we are very proud to recognize our citizens, um, that have this, that have illustrated some outstanding, uh, character traits. Martha Forns, would you join me at the podium, please? And Ms. Peggy here also, would you maybe join us? Ms. Gilmore, would you like to read what she wrote, or would you prefer?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you might, so I'm gonna let you speak right into the microphone.
Martha Forns is a model of charact- of the character trait, respect. She consistently treats people with utmost respect. This respect can be seen in dealings with individuals whenever she is doing her civic responsibility, such as the Thursday night market, or working in her professional capacity as a realtor. Even in tough situations when others have wronged her, she never responds in kind. She always takes the high road and maintains an attitude of respect. She is a very kind person, always giving of herself. I am very proud to call her my friend.
And I believe your family's here, too.
Yeah.
There. Do you guys wanna stand up so we can?
Brad, look fun.
My husband and my daughter.
Okay, then, with that, I am going to present you with this award, and shake your hand, and give you an opportunity to say whatever you feel like.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. It is hot.
Um, thank you. Thank you to the character coalition committee. Uh, this is definitely a humbling experience for me. I didn't plan on saying anything, so, ah! Um, we've been in town in the city of Galt for just over sixteen years. We're originally from Southern California. We have made this our home, and we came up here not ever hearing of the town of Galt, not having any friends, family, but everyone that we've bumped into has absolutely been a part of our life, and we consider them family. It has been wonderful doing real estate in the, in the city of Galt and throughout Northern California. The best reward of this job is not my paycheck, 'cause these days it's very small. It has been the people that I've had the pleasure of working with. Absolutely golden. Thank you very much, and thank you for this award.
Your daughter?
Hi, good.
Brad? Okay, city clerk, would you like to, uh, present the next presentation?
I would love to. Um, if I could have Patricia St. James come up regarding the underage drinking pamphlet review.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. We've talked about the underage drinking pamphlet, and I'm here to check to see if we have the approval to go with it.
You're asking for the city to, uh, let you include our logo?
Load our seal. Yes, your seal on, on the underage drinking. Again, it'll be on the, uh, webpage. That's it. And, uh, Kathleen Amis was gonna be here also, but she obviously couldn't make it tonight, but, um, we would like to go ahead and, and put it on the webpage if it's okay with you. We do have the elementary district. We'll find out next Wednesday whether they approve it or not. The high school already has approved.
Where do you plan on putting the seal?
It's on the very last page.
Of the, okay.
Seaweed logo's on the very last page.
Oh, right there, okay.
I think when we initially talked to you, we said we were going to approve, didn't we?
Uh, yeah. The way this is on the agenda, I would ask the city attorney if we can take action on it. It's listed as a presentation.
Yeah.
But are we able to go ahead and, um, give her the approval she's requesting to use our seal?
Well, um, it's, it's not listed as an action item, but, um, I think that, uh, under the circumstances, if the council just wanted to provide a, a general consensus that they were okay with the use of the seal, that that would certainly be appropriate, and there would be no reason to bring it back.
Okay, so, council, do we have your consent, just to allow Patricia to use this on the, on the flyer?
You got mine.
On the website, right?
On the website.
And on the website also.
And, and, and my name's attached, but it's not about me. There, there were, our previous chief of police, uh, had a lot to do with it, both school districts, um, we had, um, people from the community businesses involved with this, and, uh, underage drinking is, is a huge problem. It's a huge issue, and we'd like to provide information to our parents, 'cause they're the best line of defense against us. They're the best in terms of letting their youth know some of the information, but that they, they don't, they are not for underage drinking. There's a reason why we wait till twenty-one. The brain isn't fully functioning yet. It's all kind of mush up here at the beginning. Once, I think we've all been around kids, they hit about eleven or twelve, and they forget consequences, you know, and that returns about age twenty-one, sometimes a little bit older, but this gets information to parents so that they can, they can, you know, take a stance and support their youth in making better choices. So it's really, truly about making better choices, you know? Go out and join the football team, or, for those who know me, I can't stand football, but go to a sport, go get involved with something else rather than spending your time drinking.
Patricia, if I could ask, how do you plan on getting these out to the parents of these students, uh, to distribute these?
Let me back up. Um, this is actually my third time here, and I didn't realize it was supposed to be a presentation, I'm sorry.
You're still good.
You're so wonderful.
You're good, good lady.
Um, the, um, what we want to see is web based, and we, the organization's putting together for this, for us, is CARDS, the Center for Applied Research Solutions. They get money from the federal government to help communities with drug and alcohol prevention. So they're the ones that put it all together for us. Um, they're the ones that were able to get the statistics where, you know, Sacramento County, uh, binge drinking is, is a big problem here. In Galt, it's ten points more, so if you look at like age, excuse me, ninth grade and eleventh grade, it's rated around twenty, I think twenty-five percent in, in the greater Sacramento area. I'm sorry, I don't have a rate in front of me. In Galt, each of those numbers are ten, ten points higher, so it's like thirty and thirty-five. Um, anybody can skim, find it for me, it'd be great. Um, so, in answer to your question, the reason why I mentioned CARDS is 'cause they also design these little postcards that we can hand out in various places, and also, um, posters that if the businesses here in Galt will allow us putting it up in their windows, then parents in their own leisure can go to it. We plan to have a few, um, printed out for people that don't have access to computers at both schools, uh, excuse me, school districts, and possibly, um, the police department and Parks and Rec. We do not have a budget. This is done, done totally by, uh, volunteers, and, um, there are some other things, depending how the coalition continues to operate, that we can do to get the word out. The other thing that has happened since, um, I was first presenting on this, is that through the State Department of Drug and Alcohol, we now have access to five hundred dollars to do a, um, oh, a town hall meeting that we could do this, this fall, and we'd want to provide food and, um, do as much advertising as we can, all different sources so we can, to get people out and, and just give them more information.
Do you think there might be plans to go to, uh, to the schools also, to?
Absolutely. Yeah.
But I think that's important, usually, with our, our, our middle school and, uh, high schools, too.
Right, and last year, when, you know, there were some challenges with kids attending school, with going to school, absolutely plastered, and, um, I don't know that, you know, I hope that was clear, they were totally drunk, and they had to be rushed to the hospital, and it happened several times, quite a few times. It, it, we really do have a challenge down here. And I say down here, I live in Elk Grove. I used to work here, uh, my heart's still here. But, uh, we, we have some work that we need to be doing, and I, I see, I see Galt as a community that totally loves their youth, and we're here to support our youth. We need to do some other very specific things at this point to not come down on them, but to point out other options. There's other things to do, you know? Take up square dancing, start, you know, it really doesn't matter. Do something positive with your time as opposed to getting drunk on a, a school day and going to school drunk, you know? There, there are other ways to, to do that. I wanna say one thing, this is toot my horn in a way, but years ago, when I first started working down here, I was always telling kids, there's other ways that you can have all the sensations of being drunk or on drugs. You can have all that. That it's not illegal, that it doesn't cost money, it doesn't destroy your brain or your body, and they say, well, what? I said, you can meditate, or you can take up yoga, or tai chi, there's all these other things. It takes work and discipline, but you can do it. That's how I started teaching yoga down here. Kids said, wow, okay! And I'd have all these kids, and we'd have to turn them away. Once we had so many in the room, we had to turn them away. But those kids were coming, and they were mainly sixteen and seventeen-year-old boys coming to take yoga. The one assignment, though, is that they had to come straight. Now, did they always do that? 'Cause I always catch them, not necessarily, but the point is, they were learning something, and they were open to it. We've got wonderful kids here, and I think that with some support, and our parents need support, they need to know that, you know, the kids do care about what they say, and that's what this, this underage drinking pamphlet's all about.
Thank you, Patricia, then, very important, appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Any more questions? From anybody? I think I see a consensus that, um, we're good for you to go ahead and use?
Thank you.
This, and I would also ask if you, uh, would consider maybe speaking to our Galt City Council Youth Committee?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, they can really help with this project.
Uh, I'll speak to anybody that will, will, will listen.
All right, we'll, we'll set it up.
Yeah, no, we, we, we definitely need help to get people to the town hall meeting. To go to that much work, we, we want people there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. And for those of you that don't know Patricia, she's been working for several years now in Galt with our youth. She may claim Elk Grove, but, uh, like she said, her heart is in Galt. So thank you, Patricia.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for the public comments?
Yes. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on agenda items during consideration of the items. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject or extent of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Uh, first, Fred Gates.
Thanks for all these good years, Fred.
Yeah, yes. The first one you see is booklet, it's actually the annual report from the mosquito district that came hot off the presses today.
Wow.
It was distributed to us. It's got some pretty fascinating reading on what we did in the last year, some of the activities around both counties that we represent. Like, you just might like to know, a lot of people don't really understand what we do, and this is a really good, short, relatively short, uh, primer on what the work has been in the previous year. We issue it every July.
Do you wanna tell everybody who you are, or who you represent?
I'm Fred Gates, and I'm the, I'm the, I'm Galt representative for the Sacramento Mosquito and Vector Control District. Um, the second item is more concerning. First of all, this year with mosquitoes, it's been a very, a very odd year. When we got the heat wave, um, numbers skyrocketed above the normal average. Then we've had these downspells where the numbers have fallen. When it skyrocketed, and we're always about a week behind in our testing, we discovered a pocket of West Nile virus in Wilton. You're stomping ground, Randy. Uh, the, the email that I gave you shows you the addresses of the traps where we found them. They're about two miles north of Twin Cities Road, so it's right on the edge of the city, basically. We're doing ground flogging in the mornings and evenings in the area with trucks, but it's probably wise for everybody to remember to use, uh, mosquito repellent containing, primarily which can buy is DEET, there's some of Pecaridine, but DEET.
Is that what this is?
We don't recommend any one product.
Oh.
One chemical, DEET, but not any one product, so off cutter, there's a bunch of different varieties out there. That happens to be, we buy them in bulk, and, uh, uh, so that just happens to be what we get the best price on this year. And finally, anybody who has any standing water or anything else, let me know, or let the district know. Rick Walters last week, uh, or two weeks ago, said something to me about a, uh, something with drainage at Walker Park, and I talked to our ecological manager this morning, and in fact, he'd been, Bill Forrest from Public Works had called him and told him about it, so we knew about it, but those are the kinds of things, because Walker Park's still totally fenced, if it hadn't been for a neighbor saying, hey, there's something out here collecting water, we'd have never have known. I mean, it was really great that, that Public Works called them, but that does happen, so if you know of any standing water, anything, you know, they can get in touch with me, or Liz knows how to get ahold of me, and, uh, or they can get ahold of the district. And the website for that is fightthebite.net. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John Wilson?
Hi. Uh, my name is John Wilson. I live at one three six five four Sargent Avenue, directly across from the fifty-yard line of your new football soccer field at Walker Park. I am a member of the Sargent Avenue Neighborhood Watch. We are a group of about fifty families who live on the perimeter of Walker Sports Park, and if Sargent Avenue is the Galt city limits, many of us live within about forty feet of your limits. However, we are all in the county. We, uh, banded together a few years ago because crime was becoming a pretty major issue out there. Drugs, car, motorcycle thefts, uh, not to mention break-ins. With help from the Sacramento County Sheriff and a lot of dedicated members, I'm proud to say we've made a difference. However, due to county cutbacks, we are virtually on our own now. I believe we only have one sheriff covering our area, and that area extends out to the delta. It covers about two hundred and fifty square miles for one officer, and needless to say, response time has increased a lot. I'm here tonight to ask what those of us on the other side of Sargent, or your city limits, what help or assistance we might expect from the city, your Parks and Rec, or the Galt PD in time of need. Uh, some of our concerns are vandalism, drugs, fights, uh, parking on our property, trash from your soccer and football games. Have you made plans to help or assist us in any way? Question?
Just a question. And I don't know if our chief is prepared to talk at all to whether we have some kind of agreement with the sheriff's department for emergencies or anything. If not, I would suggest maybe you two could set up an appointment, but if you have any, anything that you want to address his comment, I'd be happy to hear you.
Well, in case of any type of emergency, we will respond, um, and wait for the arrival as far as the sheriff's department. It's kind of a universal, uh, lateral thing that we do between agencies. Uh, we do have a meeting set up, I believe it's next week, with the sheriff and all the police chiefs from the county to discuss several issues that we might be able to help one another in, and, um, I am available. If you call the police department, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you or anybody else to discuss some of your concerns.
Super.
See if we can come up with some kind of, uh, action plan for all of us.
Well, we have our Neighborhood Watch meeting in your building. Uh, we just had one a week ago, and, and this was, we had one sheriff who volunteered his time to come. Uh, we've never had anybody from the Galt PD, but we'd love to talk to you.
Okay.
Super, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. Then do you want to read the consent calendar, please?
Sure. We have seven items tonight. The first item, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of July fifth, two thousand and eleven. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrant. Number three, historical society equipment request. Number four, an ordinance establishing the relocation appeals board, and that's up for adoption. Number five, renewal of a cooperation agreement with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency to act as the city's agent regarding the administration of the city of Galt Community, Community Development Block Grant activities. Number six, approval of the treasures report for the period ending May two thousand and eleven, and number seven, adoption of an ordinance amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt for the Corillian Corners Northeast Area Specific Plan Amendment and Rezone Project.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on it? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. We will now go to scheduled matters.
Okay, first item, under scheduled matters, northeast, northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, public hearing, approval of engineer's report, and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve.
Good evening. Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with your Public Works Department, I'll be giving the presentation. This is, uh, the northeast is the first of three similar staff reports for the city's landscaping and lighting districts. The recommendations before you, uh, is, one, conduct a public hearing on the levy proposed assessments for the northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, and upon close of the public hearing, approve the engineer's report as is or as modified pursuant to such public hearing, and order the levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. The northeast L and L District was formed in nineteen ninety. It is, the levies, the annual assessment levies fund, uh, for example, various things within the district, maintenance and operations of landscape medians, landscape corridors, and screen walls, street lighting facilities, park improvements, park maintenance, open spaces, and district administration. The overall benefit zone for the northeast consists of residential and commercial industrial parcels within specific areas of the area, primarily the northeast lying east of State Route ninety-nine. Currently, there are three thousand and fourteen parcels that are assessed in this district. The annual assessments for the parcels within the northeast vary from the smallest assessment being about thirty-seven dollars, the largest being fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars, and the most frequent assessment is a hundred and eleven dollars. Approximately two hundred and twenty-three parcels have that assessment. Northeast assessments have not changed since the inception of the district, and due to Prop two eighteen, may not be increased without a ballot vote. At your regular meeting on June twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, council approved the noticing of the draft engineer's reports, which were published, declared the intent to levy such assessments, and ordered a public hearing for consideration of same as required by the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. The fiscal impact, the annual assessments to be levied represent revenues to be collected in an amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, which is completely offset by district expenditures for this coming fiscal year. In conclusion, I ask the council to conduct a public hearing, open a public hearing, at, if, uh, hear any testimony to such. At the close of the public hearing, approve the engineer's report as is. If there are no modifications, uh, are presented during the public hearing, and then order the actual levying assessments and collection of monies for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. That concludes- That concludes my report for the Northeast area. I'll be back with two more.
Okay. We will open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the council to consider the recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second. You have a first and a second? Roll call? Read it, read the recommendations, yeah?
We have a motion on the floor with a second to adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report and ordering the levying of the annual assessment for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next item?
Next item is Westside Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District, nineteen ninety dash zero two, public hearing, open a public hearing, also approval of the engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve.
As mentioned, this is for the Westside Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District, nineteen ninety dash zero two. This is the second of the three reports I'll be giving. The recommendations are very similar to the first one as presented with the only change being the district name. This district was also formed in nineteen ninety and the levies, the annual assessments fund very similar activities, maintenance and operation activities as identified in the Northeast area. The overall benefit zone for the Westside District consists of residential and commercial industrial properties within specific areas of the city, generally lying west of State Route ninety-nine, with some residential parcels just to the east. Currently, one thousand and seventy-seven parcels are being assessed in this district. The annual assessments for the parcels within the Westside District vary from the smallest assessment being about thirty-seven dollars, the largest being nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and the most frequent is two hundred and twelve dollars with about three hundred and three parcels being assessed that amount. Westside assessments have not changed since the inception in nineteen ninety and due to Prop. two eighteen may not be increased without a ballot vote. Again, at your regular meeting on June twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, council approved the noticing of the draft engineer's reports, the publishing, declared intent to levy such assessments, and ordered a public hearing for the consideration of same as required by the Landscaping Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. Fiscal impacts, the total assessments for this district represent a hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty and seventy cents, which is again completely offset by district expenditures for the fiscal year. With that, request that you conduct a public hearing and hear testimony and...
We will open the public hearing on the Westside Galt Lighting and Landscaping District. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak to this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and... Was there, were there any questions?
No.
From the council?
No.
Councilman Singleton, I thought you looked like maybe...
No, I thought our attorney was gonna speak up and say something, so I was gonna, before we started voting, and you answered his question evidently.
Okay. Then do you want to read the items?
Yeah, do you want to get it? Do you want me to read the recommendation?
Is there a motion on this item?
Are you gonna, Liz gonna read it or...
She's gonna wait till after you make the motion and then she's gonna read it.
Either way, can I move?
Unless you, wait a minute, would you prefer she read it?
Well, she's gonna read it anyway. It'd be nice to read it first, so I know what I'm making the motion of. At this time, staff's looking for... You could put something in there, you know Liz. For a motion, at this time, staff's looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report and ordering the levying of annual assessment for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. So moved.
Second.
Any other discussions on this? Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Ready for number three?
I am, if you are.
Do you want me to read?
Uh, this is...
I can read it, I don't have to. Um, the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, number three, um, public hearing, approval of engineer's report, and levying of annual assessment for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and...
This is the last of the reports for the city's landscaping and lighting districts. Uh, and the recommendations are the same as previous two with just the district name being changed. District is relatively new and was formed in two thousand and five. The annual assessment levies are used to fund very, very similar things, maintenance operations, landscape medians, landscape quarters, screen walls, street lighting facilities, park improvements, open spaces, and district administration. The overall benefit zone for the district number three consists of parcels within the city lying west of State Route ninety-nine, excluding those parcels that are encumbered, encompassing by the Westside Galt Lighting, Landscaping, Maintenance District. Currently, there are two hundred and thirty parcels being assessed. The annual assessments for all the parcels within district number three are all the same for the parcels, they are not fixed and may be adjusted annually for inflation. Original setup of this district established one point five percent as the minimum adjustment that could be made if the consumer price index adjustment factor winds up being less than one point five percent. The CPI compares index from January twenty-two to January twenty-eleven. With that, the CPI came to one point four-two percent, therefore, the assessment was increased by the one and a half percent. The proposed maximum assessment for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve is two hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents per parcel, which is a four dollar and sixteen cent increase per parcel from the last fiscal year. Again, at your regular meeting on June twenty-first, council approved the noticing of draft engineer's report, declared intent to levy such assessments for L and L District number three and ordered a public hearing for the consideration of same as required by the Act of nineteen seventy-two. The fiscal impact, the assessments amount to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents, which is nearly offset by district expenditures for the fiscal year. As an alternative, you can approve the assessments as outlined or you can consider a assessment with no increase or a smaller increase. That is your prerogative. That option is not recommended as the assessments as outlined create a small reserve that is added to the reserves for the district as being a relatively small and a new district, those reserves are relatively small at about fifty thousand. So with that, I take consideration, council to conduct a public hearing and receive their input.
Before I conduct a public hearing, are there any questions regarding this one?
Since we don't have a map, could you kind of tell us where it's at? I'm not sure. I don't see the diagram.
Would be pleased to. Uh, the district, oh, that's interesting. Map didn't print out. Um, it is the new subdivision that is north of West Elm, um, basically around Sparrow over, the name is totally confusing. Schmidt Ranch, thank you very much.
Schmidt Ranch.
Schmidt Ranch. Um, there's some smaller parcels, um, near Cost Road and um, there were, when the district was formed, there were two sub, new subdivisions, Creekside Unit Two, number two.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this? Landscaping and Lighting District, number three. I see no one coming forward, so I will close the public hearing. And city clerk?
At this time, staff's looking for a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report and ordering the levying of annual assessment for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve.
So motion?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Aye, Councilman Singleton. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Might have privilege to present at least a portion of this to the council and the community. The strategic planning process that the city of Galt goes through is one that we've done for the last several years. It's a process where we get together as council and staff and set priorities, set goals. We do three-year goals and then within each of those goals, we establish objectives. We have facilitator, we get together and try to think strategically about what are the most important things that we should be doing as a city. We have very limited resources and so now, more than ever, it's critical that we be very strategic in how we utilize those scarce resources that we have available to us. And so, um, last week, we sat down, went through, reviewed how well we had done over the last six months. We do this every six months and then set new objectives, new goals for the next six month period. And so, um, I'm going to just spend a few minutes talking about what has been accomplished over the last six months, the goals that were assigned from council to staff. And then the mayor's gonna go through some, highlight of the goals that were set for this next six month period and the things that we as staff and council are gonna be working towards over that, that period. And all this information is available on our website, so if the community wants to go and find out, there's a very lengthy list of accomplishments on there. I believe we had fifty-four, three?
I think so.
Something like that. Uh, list, items of accomplishment and then the goals and objectives are on there as well, so people can go on and find out, because we're not gonna go over everything, but just highlight a few. A few of the things that I think we're most proud of, the things that we were able to see accomplished over the last six months are obviously, this time of budget difficulties, the fact we were able to balance the city's budget, we were able to come up with new employment labor agreements with our various employee groups. We were able to balance that in a fiscally responsible manner while preserving as many services to the community as we could. We held, we did a lot of emphasis and priority towards trying to engage the community, so we had community gathering and other types of workshops and meetings and things and that tried to reach out to that, to the community that we serve. We had a success, very successful Independence Day celebration that we were able to, working together, staff and council, just a couple of weeks ago, a big success for the community. We're very proud of that. Did some other things. We had some personnel changes. We have a new police chief. He's very hard at work and doing some great things for our police department, very proud of that, looking forward and excited about, um, the continued work of that department and the talent that he brings to that position. We negotiated a power purchase agreement for solar power at a wastewater treatment plant that'll result in over a million dollars in savings over the next twenty years out of our wastewater treatment plant. We initiated property acquisitions and continued improvement down in our old town, the Brewster's Building and Galt Place projects that have been completed in the last several months and then initiated the property acquisitions and other things we have down there and working on lease agreements down in the railroad property and the central corridor project that is under design now. We initiated and issued redevelopment bonds that is gonna fund a lot of these projects down there, so we've cleared some of the hurdles that the state has put in front of us, looking forward to getting those projects back on track. Obviously, the big one that everybody notices in town is Central Interchange Project. That just started gangbusters back at the beginning of the year and it's every day, every week, it's changing and very exciting to see the changes. I know it can be an inconvenience for some of the residents and people visiting the businesses. We're trying to minimize that to the best of our abilities, but we're looking forward to the ultimate completion of that project and the impact it's gonna have on the community. We completed the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, multi-million dollar project that's been at work for many years and many councils and finally saw that to completion over the last six month period. Just a whole variety of things. Those are, I think, some of the big highlights that I wanted to go through, but again, there are fifty-some odd list of accomplishments on the website that the community can go and take a look to see what, what staff and council's accomplished over that three or ten things we're very proud of. So we're looking forward to the next six months and I'll turn it over to you, mayor, to kind of go through what we have in store for the next six months.
I would just say that the things that he mentioned were very, very good accomplishments and it only came from the cooperation of the council and the staff working together. And I think we did so again when we met to set up our new objectives. And these are all guided by something the city agreed on, the city council agreed on some years ago, mission statement, our vision statement, organizational values. And I've asked the city clerk to read those because those are the guidelines that the city council took to set our goals. It's not just something that we decided at the last minute we wanted to do, it's always been out there in front of us that we're trying to achieve these objectives.
Okay, first, our mission statement. The city of Galt, excuse me, the city of Galt is committed to providing exceptional public services and facilities that are responsive to the needs of the, of the community in an honest, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. Next, our vision statement. The city of Galt will be a premier, family-oriented community united to create a unique city with diverse shopping, dining, entertainment, and employment opportunities with a small-town atmosphere. And our organizational values. The city of Galt values community service to the public, accessible, open, honest government, professionalism, a safe and humane organization, fiscal responsibility, a progressive, responsive organization.
And out of those, we have set up three-year goals. And city clerk is gonna read the goal and I'm going to go over the highlights of some of the actions that we got out of our workshop.
Okay, our first is enhance economic development.
And unfortunately, most of those depend on the redevelopment, what happens to that in the future. But in addition to that, I would mention that we are gonna work on streamlining our permit process and that'll be done by the principal planner. Pretty much, the rest of it depends on what happens at the state level. We have hired a consultant, Buxton, that will also be reporting back to us and then the principal planner will present that to the city council. Let's go on to the next goal, please.
Our next three-year goal, attract, develop, and retain quality staff.
Uh, some, and this is all available to you, I'm not gonna go over everything, just touch on some of the highlights. Our HR person will be putting together a job shadowing program. Looks like she is the star person on all of these objectives. She will also be putting together a citywide employment recognition program, which I think is gonna be very important. We're going to... We're going to conduct an anonymous, I say "we," again, it'll be our HR person, anonymous online employee survey on how to improve morale and job satisfaction. That'll give our employees the chance to speak what they have in their mind. Also, we will create a citywide training program, and this program will be in the hands of our HR person. Paul's going to be very busy, I know she's going to do a great job. Next goal.
Next goal, improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves.
The main thing I wanted to mention on this one is to be done by our finance director, and she's going to determine our department's cost of programs and services, and then, the cost of services is going to be compared to the fees that we're collecting. So, we're going to see how we look financially. Also, we get these big, thick reports, I say "we," the city council, and sometimes we don't always understand what we're getting. I hate to admit it, but it's the truth. So, the finance department is going to give us some education in how to read all those numbers and accounts and what they mean to us. That's going to be a good job. Let's go to the next item.
Increase community engagement.
The star on this one will be our new police chief. He is going to implement the TIPS Form 1-1 program, which is an electronic messaging system, and he's going to come back later and give me more details. We're not going to go into that tonight. Also, at his suggestion, we're looking at creating a community advisory board. All of these are going to be really powerful networking tools. The advisory board will be made up of the neighborhood watch groups, and just imagine the information that we can get out with these two tools. I think it's going to be a great effort. Also, our community event sign that our city treasurer has been so good to keep up to date at the community parks has been pretty successful, so we're going to add two more, if we can fit it into our budget, two more signs at other parks, and maybe get our youth committee involved in helping update those signs rather than make our treasurer run around from park to park. Next one, next goal.
Provide services and facilities responsive to community needs.
Special projects administrator. Develop and implement an online parks and recreation application where if you're going to register for something, you can just go online, it'll be very convenient. I'm sure that citizens are going to appreciate that. Also, going to develop and present to the city council for action a community outreach program, and this was suggested by Councilman Singleton. And then, another item, promote the bus system, South County Transit, to look at what we can do to make it more effective. And those are just some of the highlights of the work that we have before us for the next six months. We'll be back in six months, same time, same channel, and give you a report on what we've accomplished and where we're going from there.
We will provide monthly reports back as well.
Yes, we will. Okay, in addition to keeping our community signed up to date, our treasurer, Sean, is going to report on our investment policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, city council members. This evening, or I should say, a month and a half ago, I presented to you the investment policy for this current fiscal year, which is 2011, 2012. And tonight, I'm bringing it back to you and asking for two changes. If you look in your report on page, what is called Page Seven of fourteen, there's two changes, and for the public's information also. One of the change is more of a housekeeping matter. It talks about the FDIC insurance, what was in the original, it said a hundred thousand, we all know that's now two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's kind of more of a housekeeping thing. The second change that I'm requesting is a change in the fact that, in the investment policy, it states that the city cannot invest any more than fifteen percent of the city's portfolio into one single financial institution. And the reason I'm bringing this back is the city manager, finance director, myself, had a meeting with our local bank that we use, Farmers and Merchants Bank, about three weeks ago, and they mentioned to us that their money market account is currently paying a half percent. I realize this doesn't sound very much.
Are we supposed to get sided over that?
Hold on. Okay, that their money market's paying a half percent. Okay. So, now, our State of California LEAF account is very similar to a money market account in the fact that it is very liquid, has one-day liquidity. And so, with that, and I just happened to pull this, in the thirty-four and a half years of history for the State of California LEAF account, what it is, it's at its lowest point in that thirty-four and a half year history. As a matter of fact, what LEAF is currently paying, their daily rate is point three eight. So, what I'm asking for is to change this fifteen percent into one, from one single institution to twenty-five percent. That way, it provides me with some flexibility to move some of LEAF funds that we currently have from LEAF into Farmers and Merchants. Now, we currently, at Farmers and Merchants, we currently have nine million dollars. Three million into a CD that matures in August, and six million in a CD that matures in September. What I'm going to do with those is still keep them at Farmers and Merchants, and I've already negotiated a deal to just kind of switch it around. I'm going to take six million and put it into, for one year, at point six percent, and then, for, take three million, put it in for two years at point eight percent. Thus, it gives us a little bit more flexibility to put some more money into Farmers and Merchants, into their money market, and so, that way, it's better than the LEAF rate, and we'll leave it in there until the LEAF rate moves up, which I don't think will be for quite some time. But, there, Farmers is limiting us to three million dollars into their new money market. All in all, I'll summarize it real quick. If you take three million dollars, and you're going to have a gain of, say, ten basis points in a year's time, that means thirty thousand dollars' worth of more interest that the city can earn. So, based upon that, that's why I'm asking for the change from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent into a single financial institution. Okay? And I'll answer any questions that you may have if I've lost you along the way. Okay?
Any questions from the council? Well, you have them off me along the way, but I do appreciate, I do appreciate your looking at it and getting what you can for us, what it's all about.
In the, just to give you a little summary, in thirty, thirty-four and a half year history, the highest yield that LEAF had was in August of nineteen eighty-one, if you remember those times, twelve point eight four percent.
Wow.
Okay? Thirty years later, you'll get about point three eight.
Can we go back to the good old days?
Okay.
Yeah. The other question I have, would there be any, our funds will still be secured?
Yes, our funds will still be secured. As, it is a law that financial institutions have to collateralize these funds, which means they have to put a hundred and ten percent of pledged securities to, into a third-party custodian. So, worst-case scenario, number one, F and M is one of the strongest financial institutions here in California, but worst-case scenario, if something happens to them, then we, the city, can go directly to that third-party custodian, and those securities would be ours. So, the answer is yes, they are, they are safe.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve the investment policy as amended.
Thank you very much.
So, a motion?
I'll second.
We have a first, and we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, I would call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Motion is pa- oh, aye, and the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Galt repealing and replacing section fifteen point oh four point one two zero of the, of chapter fifteen point zero four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding appeals of administrative decisions pertaining to the Uniform Codes and California Codes.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance was first presented to the council at the last meeting, and what it provides is for the abolishment of the Housing Advisory Board of Appeals, and would further provide that appeals of decisions of the city's building official would be handled in accordance with the procedures that are currently in the Municipal Code in Chapter Twenty-One. There was discussion at the last meeting regarding the fact that the appeal hearing before, the hearing officer would be a final decision. City council requested at the last meeting that that be modified so that the decision would be advisory and then come back to the city council for final action. So, the ordinance before you this evening provides, and I read, the hearing officer shall prepare a recommended decision, including any findings or conclusions required for that decision, and shall submit that recommendation and the record to the city clerk for presentation and consideration by the city council. The city council may adopt, reject, or modify the recommended findings, conclusions, and decisions. The determination of the city council shall be final and binding. So, with that change from the last meeting, this ordinance is presented for your consideration this evening. If acceptable, I'd recommend that the ordinance be introduced, waive first reading, and continue to the next city council meeting for adoption.
Any discussions on this or questions? Thank you, city attorney, for that modification. Okay, you want to read the action again, recommended action?
I can. At this time, staff looking to introduce an ordinance repealing and re-adopting section fifteen point zero four point one two zero of chapter fifteen point zero four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding appeals of administrative decisions pertaining to the Uniform Codes and California Codes. Waive full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting.
Do I have a motion to that, sir?
I'll make the motion.
One second. Is that Councilman Shelton?
Yeah.
Made the motion, that's did by Vice Mayor? Powers? Any discussions? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Capital Improvement Program Project Update, June 2011.
Okay. What I'd like to do is present to the council an update of our capital improvement program. We do this once every quarter. This will be the final report for the last fiscal year's capital improvement program. And typically, I don't go through each of the individual items, but ask if there are council questions or community questions. This is an opportunity to really present an update to the council and the community about the aggressive capital improvement program that we have that's underway with all the projects that we have throughout town, whether they're in design phase or construction phase. We have a lot of things happening. Walker Park is nearing completion. I already talked about the interchange, wastewater treatment plant, other things that are coming up. And their next quarter, we'll present the current, this next, this year's capital improvement program and things we're going to be working on, there are a number of carryovers and so forth. I wanted to acknowledge the Public Works Department, and they're the ones that really implement this program, prepare the specs and designs and RFPs and manage and monitor the construction and all the hard work that goes into that. It's a, there's a lot of different projects that the community is seeing. I know we've had just enormous amount of construction work going on, and so, I wanted to definitely make sure that the council and the community acknowledges the hard work of our Public Works staff, and all the staff involved in various degrees associated with this. Finance Department, every department in some way touches these projects, community development, does a lot of the CEQA, environmental work. Finance, obviously, has a huge role. So, every department in some way touches it, but the heart and soul of the program is really our Public Works Department. So, happy to answer any questions that the council has. I know Public Works staff is here, they can answer questions as well. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Before that, I would also join the city manager in recognizing the hard work that Public Works, as well as the rest of the staff, has done on our capital improvement program. In your package, you have a list of the capital improvement projects, as well as updates as to where we are. Do you have any questions on any of them? No questions from anybody? Then...
Thank you.
What are we doing? Just receiving this report?
No action required.
No action required. Okay, then. Thank you for that report. Next item.
Next item, any communication?
Any written communications? We're moving along here.
There we are.
Okay. Now, where are we? City Clerk's report? Redevelopment, okay. You threw me with that. We will now adjourn from the regular session to redevelopment agency. We have a roll call, please.
Board members, Powers? Here. Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Yes.
Powers? Mayor Payne?
I'm here also.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary Lou.
Do we have any public comment, other than the mayor being very dissatisfied?
I have no speakers.
Okay. Consent calendar, would you read that, please?
We have three items. First one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of July fifth, 2011. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, treasurer's report for the period ending May 2011.
Is there a motion, or are there any questions on the consent calendar? If not, is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Powers? Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item.
We were all full. We have two items that were pulled until the end of August.
Then, we will adjourn redevelopment and return to the regular meeting. And with that, we will have, what's her name's report? Oh, City Clerk's report.
Tuesday, yeah.
I feel like I've been talking a lot tonight. The first item is an ordinance amending chapter eighteen point three six of the Galt Municipal Code regarding zoning. The existing provisions of section eighteen point three six combine both requirements to maintain the parking and landscape and, as well as the violations, how the violations are handled. In the current section, the reference to section, Galt Municipal Code, section one point zero eight is an error, and because the section does not exist, this is kind of a housekeeping issue to correct that. So, at this time, staff looking to introduce an ordinance amending section eighteen point three six point one three zero of the Galt Municipal Code and adding section eighteen point three six point one four zero of the Galt Municipal Code pertaining to violations for failure to maintain parking, landscaping, refuse, and recycling facilities. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter until the next regular meeting.
You've heard the recommended action on that. Is there any question, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
A motion, we accept.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Passed unanimously. Next item.
Okay, the next item, I believe, is our youth committee? That's right, okay. Okay, before you tonight is an ordinance adopting chapter two point eight five of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Galt Youth Committee. of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Galt Youth Committee. Uh, previously, council looked at the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission, um, and adopted ordinances regarding rules and regulations and, and how the committees are conducted. Uh, before you is the Youth Committee, which, um, is a new ordinance. Youth Committee was formed in two thousand and four. Um, just some highlights of the ordinance. It establishes the purpose and function of the committee. Um, it provides that students must be enrolled in the Galt Joint Union High School, in a Galt Joint Union High School, so one of two. Um, must reside within the boundaries of the district. The committee shall consist of ten students and five adult mentors. Um, one sitting council member would be appointing each mentor. The terms would run concurrently. The students would serve a two-year term, which would run from June through May. The committee shall submit annual reports to the City Council. Uh, it discuss, it talks about unexcused absences, uh, three unexcused absences would come, uh, before council. And I'm talking adults at this point, I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse everybody. Three, um, unexcused absences with adults would come before council. Um, and council may remove a member if they so choose. The co, uh, the adults do serve at the pleasure of the City Council. And I think that's, the ordinance was reviewed with the Youth Committee members, both the students and the adults. So at this time, staff looking to introduce the ordinance regarding the Youth Committee, waive the full reading, and continue the matter to the next regular meeting of the City Council.
Okay, well, the council's heard the recommended action. Is there any questions or discussion on it?
I do have a question.
Okay.
She knew that, but she could read my eyes. Uh, as far as the students are concerned, are there also, um, uh, parameters for them as far as their, their, their grades, um, their attendance in school and tardies and that kind of thing?
Well, when it, and, and I, I'll ask Mayor Payne to interject, because she actually sits on the Youth Committee. And in fact, one of the changes to the ordinance allows a council member to be a voting member of the committee.
Oh.
But one of the things that's going to happen is the Youth Committee's going to meet, put together their bylaws.
Okay.
Uh, their criteria for their students, um, you know, the, the offices that they'll hold and the, the duties of each officer, and those will come back to council for approval.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that's kind of the next step of the committee.
Okay, that I'm ahead of you guys, I'm sorry.
So at this point, they're, they're not necessarily written in here, but they will come back before the City Council.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I mean, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
One second.
We have a first and a second. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye, um, motion passed unanimously. We now have another one more, yeah.
One more ordinance.
Other item, um, is to introduce an ordinance regarding the posting, posting places. And in the current provision of the Galt Municipal Co, Municipal Code indicates public notices, public meeting notices will be posted at the Sacramento County Welfare Office on Lincoln Way. And we're looking to change that to the library. Uh, and it's, it's more convenient, it's, we think it's more accessible to, for viewing for the public. So at this point, we're looking for council to introduce an ordinance amending chapter one point one two of the Galt Municipal Code, waive the full reading, and continue the matter to the next regular meeting.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second on the action, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. We will now go to comments by staff.
Could you give just a few reminders?
Oh, did I forget you?
Well, no, it'll be on there.
Okay.
I always sneak this in. Um, just a reminder, July twentieth, the Twin Cities Road Public Workshop will be held in the Pachetti Community Room at the Police Department at six P.M. The Bucification Committee will meet Thursday, July twenty-first, at three thirty in the City Hall Community Room. There will be a public safety meeting at six P.M. in the Pachetti Community Room on July twenty-fifth. And we also have a special City Council meeting regarding Walmart on July twenty-sixth in the council chambers at seven P.M. On July twenty-eighth, Commission on Aging Meeting, five fifteen in the California Room at Parks and Rec. And the Galt City Council Youth Committee will be meeting at six P.M. on August first. Um, a reminder that the August second council meeting, it will not be held, it's canceled. Um, this meeting will be adjourned to August third, which is a Wednesday. Uh, National Night Out Celebration, which is a citywide celebration, will be held on August second. And also our Walker Park Grand Opening Celebration on August sixth starts at eleven A.M.
Thank you. Now, comments by staff. Any comments by staff?
Uh, Mayor, council members, I just did want to inform the council that yesterday, the California Redevelopment Association and the League of California Cities filed litigation in the, uh, State Supreme Court challenging the legislation that was adopted by the state a couple of weeks ago, calling for the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, or alternatively, the, uh, quote-unquote voluntary payment in order to continue to exist. Um, what they have asked for is an immediate stay of, uh, that legislation. It's pretty unusual to file a case directly with the Supreme Court. Uh, I'm not sure how long it will take before the Supreme Court, uh, reviews the matter and decides whether or not to, to issue a stay. Uh, but my expectation would be that, uh, some initial response from the court will be, will come out within the next, uh, week to ten days. And I'll keep you posted as, uh, word trickles down.
Thank you.
I got police chief.
Chief?
We have one issue. Uh, last council meeting, we had a concerned citizen voice, a, uh, issue regarding trucks parking along the rubber tracks. We contacted Union Pacific, which is their property, and their police department will be here tomorrow meeting with us. We notified everybody there through a warning notice. And in fact, they're going to have to move their vehicles so they'll be sighted. And, uh, we'll be discussing the posting of no trespassing signs on Union Pacific property with them tomorrow. And I'll let you know what the results are.
Great, thank you for following up on that. Any other comments from staff? Comments from council? I'll start down at the end there with Councilwoman Singleton, if you need comments.
I do have one thing. Um, as you know, we got a lot of building going on here on C Street, and, uh, the interchange and all that, we shutting down roads and stuff. So, on behalf of some businesses, uh, the Denny's and Save Martin, and a couple of other businesses over there, uh, Mr. Tour, Paul Tour, is, uh, uh, they wanted me to thank him personally for, and his staff, for working so effectively and quickly to get the signs up saying the businesses are opening, letting people know that this is how you can get into these businesses. Cause they, I, I, like I said, I got a few calls that the owners were very concerned about it. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else? Councilwoman Singleton?
No, that's it, ma'am. I said one thing, I was there.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Powers.
Um, I just would like, uh, if it pleases the rest of the council to go back into our council procedures and do as most cities do, and limit the pub, public comments from five minutes to three minutes.
Want to put that on the agenda, next, for next council meeting? Anything else, Vice Mayor?
That's it, that's it.
Okay, Councilwoman Shelton.
Yep, everyone just have a great week.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Well, actually, City Attorney stole my thunder on that, but, uh, again, this redevelopment.
[laughing]
We're, we're both on the same page as far as that's concerned. Uh, all I ask is, please, if you have any spare time, contact your, your senator and your, uh, assembly member, let them know the displeasure you have. I mean, this is what keeps our city moving as far as redevelopment in the Old Town area. If they take it away from us, I don't know what our city's going to do.
Good point.
And, and thank you for working hard on it, cause I know you are.
They're getting tired of hearing from me.
Anything else, Councilman Cruz?
Well, the-
Appreciate what you're doing there. Um, I have something that I think is very important. I attended the criminal justice cabinet, Justice Cabinet, uh, meeting this past week. And, uh, you heard a little bit tonight from the gentleman that lives on Sargent's concern. Um, this criminal justice cabinet is made up of the courts, Sheriff's Department, Sacramento Police Department, District Attorney, Department of Health and Human Services. Mayors are invited, um, but some of the things I just wanted to share with you so you can expect what's coming down the pipeline. Um, Don Meyer, who is with probation, I believe, I think that's his, uh, department, um, states that they need to get a plan for AB one oh nine. And basically, AB one oh nine is where the state, correct me if I'm wrong, um, chief or a city attorney, basically, that's where the state is throwing back some of the prisoners onto, uh, the local jurisdiction. Uh, so they're trying to come up with a plan to, to deal with that. Um, they're looking at more home detention, uh, the ankle bracelet thing. Um, basically, you're going to have more people out on the streets. Um, one of the judges stated that they have been reducing resources from nine hundred employees down to seven hundred and fifty now. This is from Judge Earl. And what he's basically saying is, uh, the impacts are going to be that they're not able to get documents out. In some cases, there's no telling when or if they will be heard. Um, District Attorney says they have a ten million dollar shortfall, so we know that effect is going to be out there. Um, Don Meyer again stated they have been cut fifty percent with a loss of three hundred positions over the last three years. The general sum gap is going to mainly affect juvenile hall. And they will, in fact, be closing six units. So, uh, doesn't look good from those aspects. We're fortunate in this city to have a full, uh, police force. Um, but that's just the way it is. Well, I don't know what happens once we arrest them. If the courts can't handle them after that, uh, it's going to be interesting. So that was kind of the bad news. Uh, the, the good news is I saw Spawn featured on public television. There was it, uh, Road with Rob, I think, is the name of the program. Um, it was nice to see golf on television. Uh, also, I, we've had, pardon me?
In a good way.
Very good way, yeah. Uh, there's been some discussion lately, to my surprise, about the sales tax. I think because Galt has Measure R, it's even a little more confusing. Um, but Measure R, sales tax has not changed. It's still what it was, but the state has reduced it down by, uh, a, a point. So it's now eight point twenty-five. Uh, so when you buy your cars and everything, they're going to be a little more affordable. And I believe that's everything I have. I'd just say be careful on ninety-nine. I don't like hearing on the traffic report, uh, the accidents that we're having almost daily. So, we're all aware, aware of what's going on, so just be extra careful. If there are no other comments, we will, um, adjourn this meeting to August twenty-third. Third, August third.
Yes.
Which we will meet again at seven o'clock here in the chambers.
On a Wednesday.
No, it's not on a, is it on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is on a, okay. That's it, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.